So we'll open the meeting for Monday, March 28th. Entertain the motion to accept the agenda as may be amended.
So moved.
Does anybody have anything?
No.
I get to see him on Thursday, so I tell him what I might have.
We get to see him on Monday mornings.
It's too late to change it. It's too late to change it. Okay, all in favor of the agendas presented, please say aye.
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 Motion for, we have two sets of minutes, I believe?
Well, we have one set here.
Well, maybe this, oh, you know what it was I was looking at?
Yeah, this one's a fourteen.
Minutes of the last one.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March fourteenth. I'm good with it, because I get to see that.
Early, too.
I didn't, uh...
Yeah. She, uh... She did the draft, but then she forgot to Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I had nothing in there. All in favor of the minutes of September?
March fourteenth.
Please say aye.
Aye.
I'm really getting ahead of this. September.
So are we adopting the rules of procedure?
Yeah, this is the annual rules of procedure. There's no change from what it was.
Right.
In the past.
You have to adopt it every year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, and then we have to sign off on it.
That's basically the process that the chair... And who's, who does what when?
So just number six, I mean, we're not going to follow it. I mean, we're gonna follow it, the first sentence, each select board meeting still have an agenda. With time allotted for each item of business to be considered by the select board, we just go, we roll with what it takes.
It takes whatever time it takes.
Okay? And number five, public comment issues discussed by the select board, if not offered during the open public comment period, may be offered during the meeting with the permission of the chair. This is one of the things where I said, you know, it's, if somebody has something, they can raise their hand or ask or whatever. We didn't recognize them for it. Okay? I'm saying we're gonna allow it, it doesn't have to be they or me not. So...
I think you've got that much public comment for ten minutes or so.
No, no, so...
So we shouldn't limit it?
Let people, you know, do it. And then also just in the future, for the minutes, and maybe you have it on here or whatever, but no, at the, you know, before exec, before other...
But we were gonna have another...
Just have it in there saying, give the public in case they kept quiet during the whole conversation and all of a sudden go, I wish I would have had time to say something. That's what they do at the select board.
See, the way I read it is, when we ask the question, we say, "Do you have anything that's not on the agenda?"
Right.
But then this says, "Comment on issues discussed by the board." So then, anybody, the chair, like the lady that had the dis, the thing last week?
Yeah.
We invite people into...
Right.
Talk about what's on the agenda.
Right.
But you're saying at the end of...
But I'm also saying, after the business.
After...
After other business, we could just say...
Before we close, yeah.
Before we close, hey, you know, is there something that all, you know, I mean, there are times where it's like, oh, I wish I would have said this, and...
I agree.
I don't want them to wait till the next meeting, two weeks later.
Okay.
We try to be fair, so... But that's not in the rules, that's just you setting the agenda.
Right.
So just have an automatic agenda.
So you need a motion?
You go ahead, Chris.
Need a motion, and everybody has to sign it?
We need a motion to adopt this.
Motion to adopt the rules of procedure?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. You can sign any one of them, it doesn't matter.
Just pass her on.
Are there select board member concerns?
Nothing that's on here right now.
Yeah, it's not here already.
Lucretia is not on.
Not yet.
She's not, no, she won't be.
So is there anyone that is zoomed in? That has concern or something they want to bring up? Or also you guys, just send it?
Kurt, Jan, or Wit?
Kurt's got a thumb down, so that must mean no.
Jan, you have anything, or Rich?
Nope.
Jim?
His computer's still coming up.
Okay. Wit, you're good, right?
Yep, I'm all good.
Okay.
And are you doing liquor control?
You have the list in there, they're all renewals. They're all up to date, and then there was one we were gonna talk about.
Oh, you've got the same list?
Yeah, so I just wanna...
But I thought I had the only list.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, um... Liquor license renewal applications, it's in front of us for the meeting of March 28th, allow the town clerk to move forward. There's no changes on any of them. From this past year. The last enforcement is all good. The only, I gotta make that motion, I make that motion, it's just you and I anyway, okay? From there, and then I have a comment afterwards. Maybe I'll make the comment before, just so you know. So like, the garlic has outside consumption, two of them? We've allowed, because of the pandemic, out in the parking lot area, whatever. I think we should keep it for this year, even though they still say it says a pandemic, it's not down from a pandemic. The planning commission is looking to change the parking regulations or whatever also, for amount of cars. So it's still in there, but this will be the last year that, hopefully, that we will have to say that. Okay? But we're gonna let it go through this year, so that includes like, the lookout, 'cause he has out in front. That doesn't include your places, which you don't get to vote anyway, because you came in for the original, actual permit for that extra area there. So...
Yeah, the only thing, the only comment that I would make is, I don't know if this is, where there's two here, and Lucretia would be able to define it, but sometimes like, they have a smoking area out back from their bar, that's one. And then you have another one out front, okay, where they're serving. No, where they're serving on the deck.
Oh, on the deck.
That has to be, and it would be great if that could be under one. As it is right now, like, the last time, I think, with Jack's, I got three outside consumption permits.
Right.
Okay? I'm not worried about the $20, but it's like, three different licenses that you have to, on top of the other two you already have.
So this one, I know for Brian, that's in front of us, is for out on his front steps there, that he serves dinner?
I think it's also for the smoking area out back, too, I would guess.
This is there, and then...
Oh, he wants it, he didn't do the parking lot.
He didn't, even though he didn't do it...
Okay, he knew better.
Even though he didn't do it, he still wants to have it in case he has to do it. But he doesn't have smoking in the back, right now.
For the Mogo Challenge.
So, okay?
And the one question I have, how long is an enforcement seminar good for?
It's good for two years.
Then the first one on the list is beyond the two-year period. Their last enforcement seminar was March 4th, 2020.
And it's good till March 4th, 2022.
Yeah, so it's good for two years.
And the garlic is good for April 7th, 2020.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Twenty-two.
They're good till...
They're good till next week, or whatever.
Usually when they're close like that, like they, they'll, she flagged them with B before, but she also, like, the state will flag them too, like, you're due.
Okay, so I'll make a friendly amendment that we ask the town clerk to just see if they've signed up for...
Well, all we're doing is making a motion for the town clerk to move forward.
Right.
But please take a look at...
Yeah, yeah.
These first two that were done in 2020, before you, you know, but... So the motion is for the town clerk to move forward with looking into the first two on the enforcement, the last enforcement seminars.
Okay. We're good there? Okay, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Staying.
So I'll give you this.
Do you have, you do have a copy of it, okay.
That's the Mogo Challenge.
One other for the Mogo Challenge?
Yeah, and this is not really a, a motion, this is just the town clerk letting us know that there's an outside consumption permit for Killington Restaurants, for Bear Mountain Base Lodge, for the Killington Mountain Lodge. We don't... You know, I mean, it's okay for the town clerk to move forward with the outside consumption permit.
Yeah, 'cause two weeks ago, they had the beer fest, the brew fest for outside of the building also.
Yeah. I thought we were giving the resort a blanket for...
Yeah, I think the blanket was, I don't know if it's because of where it is, it's all in that same area, but this one's over at Bear Mountain. I'm not sure why this one's separate.
When you, I think when you define the area, it needs to be posted with the state?
And this one, the area has been slightly modified. That's why they're here.
Yeah, and they allow them floating licenses, but I don't think they allow the permit. The permit area has to be approved, especially if it comes outside.
This is the same place that they...
Yeah, the brew fest.
I was thinking it was out on the front, right below the outer limits, but it is the same place as the brew fest.
The Mogo, of course, looks a little tough, it doesn't look like it's got a lot of snow on it.
No.
Hopefully, they can figure that out.
Parking lot looks empty, too.
They wish it looked that good.
Plus turn around. So, the free, the town clerk moved forward with that.
And this is a slightly redrafted resolution?
Yes, basically, the, the things that were changed from what the original one that was presented to you are... These things in, in highlighted on the screen were the changes that were made. Basically, it was related to the fact that we planned to hire a fire chief, and what the other officers, how they're laid out. And it was also some titles. Instead of officers, it says captains and lieutenants. And they, the idea, we modified the language related to the 20% of a full-time firefighter, you can't exceed that, or they become employees, that they're not employees if they're under that 20%. So if you said you were gonna pay firefighters $20 an hour, that's $41,000. They can't make more than $8,000 in stipends, where they become an employee. So...
This is approved?
This was from our turn. So, this is, those are the changes from the resolution I had handed out to you the last time. So...
Do we have any problem paying the stipend over a allocated amount based upon tax implications, or not?
No. 'Cause the issue, the only issue we really were having is we were paying each of the volunteer firefighters directly versus, and, and they were technically all members of the corporation, so we were kinda skirting that issue. This is part of the cleanup that goes on with this. If they get more than $600 in stipends for the year, that's when they get a 1099. That's what it comes down to. But overall, this is just the resolution to say, this is the framework of what we're gonna be doing as a fire department. So I don't know if you want to read it into the record, or...
That's a lot of reading.
Yeah. And this will be signed by all of you as well.
And the chat was Kurt asking to have a copy of the resolution.
Kurt, yeah, she will be getting, you can get a copy. Actually, it's on the website right now, if you go to the calendar item, you can click on that and, and print it.
I just wanna make sure it's, the fire chief shall be a full, shall be a full-time employee of the town. Okay.
Point it to a two-year term.
So once we say full-time, that gives benefits.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I'm reading it, that it's supposed to be that way, 'cause that's what we...
And the second one is a part-time, was gonna be a half-time, the way we have it budgeted, twenty hours, which is not gonna be getting benefits.
And fire chief is too...
And then the rest are based on whatever our program we set up for stipends reimbursements.
Right, okay.
You're saying the town manager has a right to revoke a suspension by a firefighter?
Yeah, basically, the firefighter, if they get suspended by the fire chief, the town manager gets involved, which, it's all, I'm in charge of HR anyway, so it's just, you know, how are we going to address that? Typically, we would have talked about this ahead, because we do have a, an employee policy we have to follow. So, you know, and with the volunteers, we'll write that up, how that's gonna be dealt with as well.
Whereas we're 1099-ing someone, they're not truly an employee.
They're not unless they exceed that $8,000 threshold.
Okay. So again, it's just for the volunteer?
Correct.
And ultimately, the chief would still have control of that?
That's correct.
Not, not the town manager?
Of disciplining? Well, if the chief would be the one to do the suspension, the town manager is responsible for the chief, and, and...
Correct. But if I'm talking about suspension here, okay, you talk about a firefighting being dismissed or suspended, and the town manager has the right to?
Well, basically, it's, it's, they have a right to appeal that to the town manager, and then we have a conversation, and we figure that out.
So the last in blue says, "Resolved that the captains and lieutenants shall be volunteers appointed to one-year terms, and it is further resolved that an officer may be removed by the town manager for just cause after notice and hearing." But as I'm reading the different blue things, the first one is a chief, the second one's a deputy chief, the third one's a chief and deputy chief, and the last one is captains and lieutenants. There's nothing above that says officer, or doesn't refer that an officer is a captain, a lieutenant. You know what I'm getting at, Gary? So I mean, I'm seeing captains, lieutenants, I'm seeing deputy chief, I'm seeing chief, but then I see that an officer, which is not mentioned, so are they all considered officers? So, I mean, I would like to see that, that, you know, something that result, an officer is one of the above, or whatever, something.
Just a clarification.
Yeah. So if you can hand that back to Jim to...
That's fine.
'Cause then all of a sudden, we sign this thing, Gary, and then they go, I'm not an officer, I'm a captain, I'm a lieutenant.
They are part of our officer structure, as a paramilitary...
Well, that's part of yours, but we're writing something up that, I mean, I don't see up above here anything that says the definition of what an officer is, and maybe that will show that, maybe somewhere up here where it is, whatever, that an officer is a deputy chief, a chief, a captain and lieutenant. We go from there. Everything else looks, you know, because then it's funny, because at the, on the other page...
The captains and lieutenants, where it took, they crossed off officers.
They crossed off officers, or whatever. Now it's in the service of volunteers, officers, captains, so the lawyer just may not have picked up on that.
Yeah, I think it's just gonna be captains and lieutenants where it says officer, and that solves the whole problem.
Yeah, so, I think, I think that page there, captains, lieutenants, and firefighters may, I think gets moved over to that section over there.
Okay.
Sorry, lawyers being lawyers.
You wanna get it right before you...
Absolutely.
Traffic ordinance.
Yeah. We'll end it up.
Kurt, you have any questions on what we just did? We tabled it. And then you'll get the copy of it.
I don't think, must not have put that one up, I gotta go find it.
Ask questions.
Tabled it until you get the typos?
Until we get the typos, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on the April 11th.
Okay.
You're not signing it till April 11th?
That's correct.
Unless we have another meeting in between, we're not signing it tonight, 'cause we gotta get that changed. So, we may get it, we may get a change and have something else to come up, and then have a meeting, and then throw it in on it, so...
And it does say, just above the blue, "Resolved that the officers shall consist of captains, two lieutenants."
Oh, yeah, we have a box there.
Collectively, officers, right?
What did I, did I get it?
No, on the other side, yeah.
No, no, right there, right above the blue, the first one, it says, "Resolved that the officers of the Killington Fire Department shall consist of a chief, deputy chief, two captains, and two lieutenants."
That's why he did it, because it's everybody is listed as an officer.
Likely officers who shall be appointed by the town manager. But then that kinda goes at the fire chief.
Should say, "The officers of the Killington Fire Department shall be defined as..."
Yeah.
"...a chief."
But then it also takes away, I'm figuring we're gonna hire on a, a, a chief, and then should be, you know, we go through it, and Gary is the chief, let's say. And then, but that says, "Which shall be appointed by the town manager." And you ain't hiring, I mean, this is like the police chief gets to hire and comes to you. You sit in on the interviews and stuff, but in the end, it's the, the chief that says, I want this person, and unless you then go and do all the background check and say, no.
Well, this is saying that the town manager technically hires the chief.
Right.
And then af, I mean, the, the town manager is ultimately responsible for all hires at the, at the advice and recommendation of the department managers. It's typical, he's just putting the statutory language.
I would agree, I think, I don't think you want your chief just arbitrarily going off and hiring...
Right, because the one thing I learned...
So I think that it should...
One thing I learned in that process when we were going through the police review is, the town manager really only has two things that they control as it comes to the police. And one is, who, all personnel, and then all the budgetary stuff, not operations itself.
I just know how this town works, and if somebody reads that, be appointed by the town manager, and getting something in there suggested or something, or vetted by the, the fire chief.
Upon recommendation of...
Yeah, upon recommendation of the fire chief. You know, or collaboration be between the two of yous. You could hire somebody, the fire chief is like...
Well, I'm just saying, like, when you go by the VSA, the, the rules say it's the town manager. No, no town manager's gonna go do it without the approval.
And I just wanna make sure that it's...
Yeah, we'll clarify it.
Clarify it. But it just needs a couple of those little tiny things, they're gonna make it. Ike, thanks, Jan, I couldn't read that, 'cause your names are on that box. But it's still a little...
Traffic ordinance?
Well, it was requested that the traffic ordinance be on the agenda to look at, like, speed limits and things of that nature on Killington Road was one of the items. But as I went through the process, there is a couple of quasi inconsistencies. There's two locations where we have half the road is 25 miles an hour, and the other half of the road is 35. East Mountain Road is one of those, and so is River Road.
They're both 25s.
The 25 to the end of the paving on River Road, and then becomes 35.
Which I think is crazy, the dirt road is, the dirt road's 35, and the...
I can't imagine doing 35 on that dirt road.
The other thing is, is the speed limit from, from the grand to Bear Mountain is 25, and from there down is 35.
I can't see doing 35 down that short term.
So I'm just saying, so if, if we're going...
And even coming down by Spruce Glen, like, after Bear Mountain Road.
And then the other conversation was, should Killington Road, you know, be moved to a 30 mile an hour speed limit?
We have to move Killington to 30 miles, according to this plan that we're going through.
Yeah, with some of the things, so that's one. So while we're looking at this, the other thing that I noticed, and this is just the, the first review, when you go to the page with the, the traffic signals, which is like page four or five, there's three traffic signals listed as to what we're gonna have that no longer exist.
No longer exist.
And we actually don't even have West Hill Road on there. So there's just some things we wanna clean up in this ordinance when we go through this process. This, because it's an amendment to an ordinance, will require a 30-day warning, and then having a public hearing, and then 60 days after that, it becomes the rule.
So in the, in the plan with VHB, there is a traffic light, I believe it's going back up at Casey's Caboose, in the plan.
Okay.
We just have to verify that.
We have to verify that, and then...
Okay, and then, we were trying, and I believe we were trying to get one up by the mall, Killington Mall up there.
Well, the question would be, because if we change the configuration of the, the intersection of East Mountain Road and Killington Road from a rotary, there'll be one there, too.
Right.
So, the question is, you know, do we wanna put in the future ones, or do we amend this each year that we, when we make the plan? And, and basically, that's what we just need to know.
But I, I mean, we could look at this like, what I'm trying to do is prove to the VEPSE board that we are serious about making changes to what they're recommending. So the one is, is that the Killington Road from 35 miles down to 30 miles an hour. And while we're at it, everything on River Road should be 25, not 35 on dirt road, 25 on pavement. And then...
East Mountain Road, which is called Roaring Brook East at this time.
Roaring Brook East, or whatever, you know, it should, it should go to the 25.
Right. So then it's just what we put in for signals, and then, and then if there's any other... 'Cause the other thing I wanted to do was send this off to Jim, just to say, okay, is there any state laws that have changed in the last 20 years when this was last adopted, to make sure we're not violating any of that? Taking the three traffic signals off of this, putting West Hill Road in, and then having, and between now and the next meeting, we can have a conversation with VHB to see if we should be including the, the Dean Hill Road one in there.
So right now, I'm just gonna say, giving the town manager direction to move forward with the traffic ordinance, to change from River Road to all 25 miles an hour, to move Killington Road, it's not Access Road, I keep on being told from someone, it's Killington Road, to 30 miles an hour from 35. Roaring Brook East, I think it is?
Which is now East Mountain Road.
Is East Mountain Road, right, is going from 35 to 25. And if you can then at this, you know, start moving forward with that, and then move forward also looking into the traffic light with the configuration that we're doing with VHB. I'm not expecting this to be in the next months, it's just that we're moving forward and you have that direction, but we're definitely changing the speed limits to those.
This has obviously been amended.
1996.
Yeah, but it's been amended every five plus, give or five years. So I think that we can amend it if we were to establish...
I mean, technically, we could amend it and make just these minor corrections, with the intention we could amend it again next year. You know what I mean, like, we don't have to...
While we're doing the road, whatever.
Right. When we actually have a plan, and then say, okay, here's what we're, we're gonna match our ordinance to what's coming.
Right.
So...
So you have those three areas that we're talking about.
And I'll fix the traffic light to the one we actually have and eliminate the other three.
Right.
And then I'll just see if there's anything else out there, and then we can have that meeting. And I'll, when I write the agenda for April 11th, we can put on there to warn the amendments to the traffic ordinance.
Right.
And then, you know, you can always delay that, but we would have it at least on the agenda, so if you wanted to, we could have it at the meeting in, in May.
We have Wit on here. Is there anything that you have on this, Wit?
Uh, not off the top of my head, I'd have to read through it, but I think absolutely, the speed limit should be consistent in the road's entirety. It shouldn't be split like East Mountain Road and River Road. So, yeah, I certainly agree with that.
Are we going in the right direction on East Mount?
The speed limit, so I just would wanna read through that first.
Are we going in the right direction on East Mountain Road from 35 to 25?
Yeah, certainly should not be raised, yes.
Okay.
This is 25 better than 30?
Should we go 30 or 25? That's, I guess, where we're coming from, Wit.
Yeah.
This is the time, it's saying 30, 35 now. And the only reason why we're saying 25, because it's, part of it is 25.
Right, it's 25 and 35.
It said 30.
So if we go 30 on the whole thing, that would work as well.
Yeah, so if you can make that mark to 30 on the whole thing. I, I would have to admit, 30 is a little bit easier going up some of the hills at East Mountain Road, then.
And, and, and this was all relatively new, so Wit, I was gonna send this to you tomorrow anyway, so we could have this conversation. And have you review the whole thing, and if you have any comments about traffic.
Wit, how do you feel about the Killington Road at 30?
I think, I think the road's built for a lot faster, whether it's safe moving forward, there's a lot more traffic than what we've suddenly seen in the past year round. 30's definitely slower speed, it's gonna, definitely slow things down, I think. It's gonna take a while for people to get used to the 30, I think. But moving forward, more development, more traffic, businesses' levels are increasing. I think that's, I wouldn't go lower than 30, that's for sure. So I'm okay with 30.
And Wit, and we've been talking about, we're working towards getting some upgraded electronic signs to flash and...
You guys know what signs I want.
Yes, we do.
I want the Chester signs. Christmas time, when you go and it's over your speed limit, it says naughty, and when you bring it in, it says nice. That's what I want. I love going into that town.
So the end of the Killington Road, or north end of the Killington Road, between basically the woods and the bottom of the road, where it's not so dense, do we feel that that should be 35?
I think that's, that should go, that's.
Well, can you come into the bottom?
I know you're coming to the bottom, but I'm saying, you're asking people to slow at 30 miles an hour when there's nothing around them. Are we setting ourselves up for, I'm just asking the question.
Well, there's frequently, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's frequently a patrolman at the bottom in the winter, as well as stop traffic at the bottom, waiting to make turns. So I can definitely see an argument for keeping it 30 all the way down. You know, so.
Yeah, and the issue that we have.
I wonder if we're setting people up, though. I'm just, I'm concerned, are we setting up for failure, because all of a sudden, we're like, it's 30 miles an hour and there's nothing there. You don't have a sidewalk, you don't have.
But we're moving, we're changing now.
Well, that's the, the ultimate piece.
We're gonna have to change this. We're gonna amend this every year. I'm just saying, what are we?
Why don't we do 30 and then see what complaints we get?
Okay, all right.
I would, I would like to try to keep it consistent, just for ease of enforcement, too, so people can't have that excuse. But also, if there is a switch, it needs to be properly posted. I don't have those statutes in front of me. There has to be, like, I'm not even sure if East Mountain Road is posted properly as far as enough warning for the speed limit change.
Well, we did put the reduced, we did do the, the MUTCD thing, which was how many feet before where you put a reduced speed ahead. But I don't know if they're still, I also don't know if they're still there.
So we're gonna go with this, starting at those changes.
Just move it 30 and.
And then, and then you want it on the April 30th or whatever?
April 11th, we'll warn it for a May meeting.
For a May meeting. You know, and then at least, we could also show VEPSE that we are taking the steps in May for the Killington Road.
Just one comment. If we do change the speed limit, we should put what the speed limit is onto those electronic signs. The one that's up north of the basin, or south of the basin, doesn't have one.
Do you take that, Chad, into consideration?
Yeah, absolutely. No, it, it needs to have that, because you gotta have a big, you actually have to have a slightly oversized speed limit sign on the bottom with the speed that you're driving, and then, and then the message, and you want the blue lights flashing and the whole, so.
Naughty, nice.
Naughty, we'll see if we can get the naughty in this one.
But it, it doesn't say what the speed limit is. It just says where you're going.
No, yeah, no, it'll say that. Because I, it doesn't work if you don't say that, realistically. No, I just got to run my treasures report.
Well, the golf financials?
Well, we brought the revised treasures report to the select board at their, at your request. Basically, there was, on the golf side, there was some things that had been combined together under the receipts, which was the transfer from the town for the bond payment, and the transfer from the town for capital contribution. Those are not technically revenue receipts of the golf course. So we broke those out, so that the 750,000 is the actual revenue from the golf course from June 1st through now, with the, the broken out pieces. It didn't change any of the, the net totals, it was a reporting change. So I don't know if you have any additional questions?
This is what I'm looking for.
So if we could.
Motion to accept the treasury report for February.
Second.
Anything else needed? Mark had shown me this.
Three remaining.
You know, aye.
And the other item that was requested at the last meeting, and Mark is here to, to talk about it, is the, the projected cash flow for the golf course was.
So this is where we asked in the beginning for how much money we had, and to get us from December through April.
Correct.
So we knew how much money we could say they were gonna be paying towards the bond or whatever else from that. You know, I, I think you wrote it up great, but if you just wanna give a little overview, Mark?
Yeah, it's, it's based on where we were on December 10th, and then, and total cash balance, and then carving out the, the restricted funds for capital. And that's why, so, so really, the cash flow available for operations was 338 on December 10th. We use the budget to predict our expenses going forward through April, and so we projected at the end of April, we'd have, we'd be at 146K in cash balance. We're tracking just about, very close to that, actually 5,000 of the good. No surprises. I looked at March, uh, earlier today, there's no surprises. We're on track with March expenses. So as long as we continue on, on this course for April, we'll be in good shape to, to start the season. Hopefully, the, the need will be less for that operating loan.
And typically, your needs are only for the month of potentially May or June, correct?
Depending on how we, how quickly we get out of the gate, once we open. But yeah, it's about really making it into that fat portion of May.
Yep.
When business picks up for, for all of us.
Yep.
That's been the last three years. Prior was, three or four years prior, this golf course prior, like, six years ago, this golf course wasn't showing a positive number until July or August.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a better trend.
Right.
We're on now.
So, and that's all I wanted to see here, is that as long as we're following a trend, we gave something in December, you know, we're coming into.
Nothing's happened over the winter to.
Just making sure that there's nothing there.
The, the number isn't still.
We made the right move of adopting a budget for whatever. Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
And the other item is the, the loan, the, the actual loan that we're talking about. As we did last year, it's for $250,000. It's 2 and 1/2 percent. It gets paid off in December. If, and it's only what we use that we pay for. And what I'm looking for, because this is the way we did it last year, is the select board to authorize the town manager to sign the document, so that we can move forward with having that line of credit.
So you need a motion to allow the town manager to sign the document for a line of credit?
Yes.
Really is a, of a $250,000 with which bank?
Mascomah.
Mascomah Bank at 2 and 1/2 percent for the golf course. I'm so moved.
Okay, we don't need to change anything on there.
No, that's just, that's just the loan documents that I can sign after this.
On your favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Last year, we borrowed.
100.
100.
So are you going to your report?
Want to go to me? Okay. We'll start with a couple of driveway permits. I have one for Brian Olson. It's a driveway on Al Ran Road. It's right there near the beginning of the road. It's, it all meets the requirements. There's nothing special to do. Just need a motion to approve the driveway permit.
Motion for the town manager to move forward with the driveway permit for.
And you're all, your agreement with culverts and everything that's going.
Yeah, because we require 18, and there's nothing required large. The only time we comment is if, okay, we have like a 24 above it, that we know is gonna be feeding in, that we ask to increase. We require the increase of size and things like that. There's nothing there that's.
Chad has to, Chad went out and looked at these things, and Ricky's.
This is for Aaron Jordan, another driveway permit. It's actually on Little Sherburne Road, up in, up in the great.
See, huh?
Nope, I have that wrong, sorry. Did I do that backwards?
It does make believe it's the same.
Yeah, that's the little, you just signed the Little Sherburne. This is the Al Ran Road one. So this is.
So what's going on up there?
The Al Ran Road, they, there's another driveway permit application for TH23. It's for property, the span number is 11624. Mosher is doing the work to, to build the permit, and we do not have any issues with this. It's, it is on a Class 4 road.
Motion for the town manager to move forward.
Yep.
Whatever signatures.
All right, thank you. Two equipment purchases were, that are budgeted for this year. One is the loader replacement. The loader. I did not put these on the screen. We have a budget of 20,628 for the, the loader, uh, annual payments. It's a seven-year lease, which is the same as what we did with the last one. And this came in almost exactly the same, but this time, we're getting a jib boom on the front, which is when we do our lifting, rather than trying to do it over a bucket, we're gonna do it, it's a lot safer to do. So it'll actually go up to 21,468. It's well within reason on the budget, and we wanna move forward with that purchase. We would probably get this sometime later. This is that one. That's my note. And it's basically a, an in-kind replacement for the loader we have now.
Is there any market to sell the loader we have?
We're getting $75,000 on the trade.
Trade-in.
Which is.
How many hours on it?
4,000.
Just curious.
I know, because you're shopping, right?
So you need a motion to move forward on a 2022 new Caterpillar 926M wheel loader?
Yep.
Part of the specs on this page two. The $75,000 less, 2014 Caterpillar trade-in.
Yep.
For a net of $121,000. Add the 6,500 for the additional jib boom.
Yep.
So it's 126,500 total. Make a motion, you go ahead. And we're leasing this.
Yeah, we're leasing that. Actually, the, the actual, what I call construction equipment, we've been doing leases for, and the trucks, we're buying cash now.
So my, I guess my, we own the current loader we have right now?
Correct.
Okay.
We've been having, we've been starting to spend real money on it, and typically, we try to keep it in. This is, we try to keep them right in that eight, nine-year rotation if we can.
What do we pay for the original one? Do you have any idea?
It was in the 160 range, I wanna say 150.
I mean, to own it outright, you'd be paying 28,000. You know, we're not gonna have, we're gonna do this for seven years.
Right.
We're not gonna have any residual value. We have right now 75,000 in residual value.
We're gonna have that. Those are, you own it at the end.
You own it at the end of seven.
This is the same lease we, we just did.
Okay, so it's lease to purchase.
It's lease, lease, well, they call it a lease. It's a lease, you own it at the end for a dollar.
That's different.
Okay. No, we own that. We will have residual.
Thank you. That's better.
Yeah, because then we don't have zero.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried.
Yeah, no, we won't have zero.
Well, they tell you, you want it. You have to pay 75,000 dollars for it.
So the other piece of equipment is the replacement of the mower. The mower is a 2011. Last year, as everybody's aware, we spent quite a bit of the summer without a mower.
This is the tractor.
This is the tractor with the, the roadside mower. That machine was probably a little bit light gauge for what we were doing, and it was also an aftermarket mower that was put on it. So we ran into a lot of issues with compatibility and problems with that. This is a new Kubota mower with the mower deck that's actually designed for the system. Surprisingly how much the price has gone up for these particular machines. When I had budgeted this, we were using the other number through inflation factors, and we had budgeted 15,364. Right now, while we're waiting for the, the actual value on our current thing, our current mower, we'd be looking at 28,000 dollars without any trade, and it's probably gonna be somewhere between 24 and 26,000. There's about three of them available at this point. So I'm asking for the select board to go, we know we're about 8,000 or 9,000 high. Our, we have, our fund for the, for the capital financing is, is well within reason to take that 8,000 or 9,000 dollars, but I believe I'm gonna have an answer by this Friday as to what the actual price is gonna be, and we could have the mower in early June, because these are on the ground. So we don't, I just, I'm afraid to not, to not jump on it.
So you need a motion to move forward for.
Not to exceed that.
Is this a lease or a purchase?
That's a lease to own, same thing.
You need a motion, so a motion to allow the town manager to move forward with a lease to own, 2022?
Who are you buying that through?
Mower?
Um, there's, we're, it's between Salem Farm and, um, who's that one? No, it's not Town Line, it's the other one. Town Line didn't, we couldn't get anything from them.
CLFP?
Yeah, well, that's a, it's a purchasing group that's doing that. Champlain Equipment, sorry.
So a motion for the town manager to move forward on a new mower, lease to own.
That's a picture of.
Not to exceed 29.
Not to exceed 29,000 dollars.
It's 28,971.
Okay. On your favor.
Aye.
I have a better tractor.
Yes, we are. I have a staff update. Last week, we had a meeting with a planner for the position of, of the town planner. We met with our group, which was the, the chair of the planning commission, the zoning administrator, and our current planning consultant, to have a conversation, and it was unanimous that we wanted to make him an offer. We did, and he is starting this Wednesday. So we're going to be moving forward with.
And his name is Darrell.
His name is Darrell Arminius. He was the former town planner of Charlotte.
Charlotte. He lives in South Burlington?
Right, and he's gonna be working part remote, part here to begin with, until everybody's together, and then he said he would be relocating as we move forward.
And then since I'm in there on a short-term rental, and until he gets comfortable, whatever, I'm in there on Monday, Tuesdays, and Friday afternoons, and Darrell will make sure that he's here Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Right.
So there will be somebody at the desk at all times.
Yep.
And, um, you know, he'll get used to it, and then he'll take over the whole planning side, and I'll stick with the short-term rental and go from there.
Great. Wanted to give you a quick guardrail update, and then request the authorization to sign the agreement. We have gotten the prices for this year. We have a new guardrail to put on Schoolhouse Road, a significant amount of guardrail that needs to be replaced on East Mountain Road, between the upper part and the lower part, where paving has happened, and now they're too low, and it's actually.
There's a lot of rusting out.
It's most, yes, most of the guardrail cost is gonna be on East Mountain Road. And the, the total quote is 50,429. Currently, in our guardrail reserve fund, we have 36,474, with the budgeted amount that's going into it of 38,749. So technically, as of July 1st, we have 75,223. This will happen right about the time of the year, and they are gonna bill us like half before the end of the year and half after. So we would then still have 25,000 dollars in the guardrail budget after this, completing these projects.
A motion for the town manager to move forward a lot yet for guardrails.
Okay.
Second.
And just so Chris knows, too, we've done it in the past where guardrails are a safety issue, so it doesn't, if, if the money's not in that line, we're doing it.
Right, yeah. And the solar equipment financing, these are for the two canopies. We had, when we, all along, when we've been working through that process, we were looking at using the financing that was tied to the state VIDA for my economic development. Going back and forth with them, we were only able to get the terms down to 4.1 percent, and it's a variable rate loan.
Wow.
Which was not very desirable. So I've reached out, we actually, we paid for those last month, but we've reached out to Mascomah to ask what they would do. And what I had asked for was a seven-year, a seven-year term with a 15-year amortization for the payments, which is what works on our, our payback program, and this is at 2.8 percent. I don't have those documents yet. They're gonna be coming this week. But I would like to move forward with that, with the goal of next budget year, starting to put 10,000 dollars in each of the two reserve funds to pay, till we can actually build up the money, so at the end of that seven years, we could actually pay that off.
So the one that was at 4.1 percent was how many years?
15.
It was 15 years also?
Well, it was 15 years, but after five years, it was annually adjusted.
Yeah, so it was a five-year arm.
So.
Was there a cap on the arm?
And we can, we can just refinance, or they'll do the whole 15 years. I was just thinking in terms of paying it off sooner. It's, you know, we can do it either way. But just, that was my goal.
What's the rate for 15 years?
I think it's around, it's probably a little higher than that. But I, I don't know, I didn't get that answer.
Can you find that out? Because I'd rather the lockers in with the way interest rates are going, than we get a 15-year. If it's, they're saying 15 fixed for.
Seven.
It's a balloon payment at seven.
At seven, right.
You're gonna have to refinance it again anyway.
Or pay it off. Like, I was, I was worried about, I was worried about the, the financing rates as well, which is why I'm like, well, if we throw an extra 20 grand a year at this, we could be done at the seven years.
Then your taxpayers are like saying you.
Oh, I understand. So I will ask that question and see what the rate is.
You know, and so maybe we can get that answer, and the change from Jim Barlow, and have a little quick meeting or whatever, get those two out of the way.
Yep.
Before the next one, so we can get, you know, move these away.
Yep, I can do that.
Because on the seven-year paper, what was, what was, what was the balloon at seven years? seven years?
I didn't get, all like she gave me was the terms at this point, she, they were doing the, the calculations for it, so...
I'd rather see...
Seven years, you're gonna be two-thirds.
It's 204,000 is the total.
Yeah, but you're gonna have, most, most of the first three or four years is all interest, and then you're just gonna redo it again when you do the...
That's fine, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, I can, I can do that.
All right.
Yeah, I was looking at just not having to finance that far, you know, that was the goal, but we can, that's no problem.
Yeah.
And that's all I have for the managers.
So, VIDA's rate was higher?
Was much higher.
And they ca, they only held the rate for five years?
Right.
And there was no cap on what they would go?
It was a half percent a year, and there was a, there wasn't a cap that I remember seeing, I'd have to go back and look, that was, I read that a couple, a few weeks ago.
Yeah, so it was like a 15, five...
Five-year ARM for 15 years, with, so technically, go up a half a percent a year, you know, after that.
Sometimes they have, how many times it can go up over the, like a 15, five, three?
Yeah, I mean, you still have that option.
But 4.1 is already too high from the beginning.
Right.